Good evening, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole Pottstown Borough Council for November 9, 2016. Would you rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republican Party's hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you had before you a copy of tonight's agenda, I am going to move two items to the top. One is the Citizens Leadership Awards, number six. The other isn't listed at all, but I want to bring to the attention of everyone in the borough that our Borough Council was given an award. It's the Tri-County Area Chamber of Commerce Award for Economic Impact, and it was presented to Pottstown Borough Council for the year 2016. I and others from council and staff were there at the chamber celebration, if you will, to receive the award. And there was also an equal plaque presented to the Pottstown School District. I point this out because time and time again, there are joint efforts between the school district and Pottstown Borough and Borough Council, and it's good that we celebrate this. It means we have more unity, we have more cooperation here in the community, and is good for all. I want to thank all the members that worked on this, our entire council staff, and I particularly want to acknowledge that we had four people appointed to an ad hoc committee to review the terms and conditions of the LERTA program that we wrote, in order for this to become law, if you will. The Borough had to pass an ordinance, the school district had to pass a resolution, and at this moment, we're just waiting for Montgomery County to sign their resolution so that we can enact this. The four people from the committee that helped us so much were Dennis Arms, Cheryl Miller, Polly Weand, and Ron Williamson. And I do appreciate all the work and the time and effort that they put into this on behalf of all the citizens here in the town. They were your watchdog, looking at all the terms and conditions in this future agreement to make sure there were no loopholes, that there were no opportunities for double dipping. And we're looking at this as our latest tool in our economic toolbox to encourage more businesses to come to town. And I've been doing so since January, asking you if you know of a company looking to start or relocate or expand, and you are tired of your 422 commute, please invite them to see one of us, and we will gladly find you a place to open business here in town. We are definitely open for business. So, on behalf of council, I'd like to give it to a manager. Okay, second, we're moving item six to the top, which is the Citizens Leadership Academy graduation. I'd like to call Courtney High, who is our leader for this program. Would you come up and make your presentations?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. We're here to graduate our second class from the Citizens Leadership Academy, which is civic engagement focused. So I'm just going to call everyone to the front, present the letter certificate. First, we have Darlene Bainbridge. Yes, if you just line up a little better. Todd Bainbridge. She also participated last time around, but injured herself, so she couldn't finish up class.
Not at the academy.
No, not at the academy. Carol Colt. Marshall Lavinger.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Paul, Paul Zach.
Good job.
I was nervous about that one.
Thank you. Tabitha Smith. And she attended with her husband, James, who is not able to be here this evening. All right. Thank you so much, everyone, for attending. I hope you found it very beneficial. Our next class will be beginning in the spring of 2017, so you all know, look out for that. Thank you, everyone.
Don't be shy, you spent all that time together. Okay, number three, subcommittee reports. Infrastructure, councillor call.
Yes. We know our infrastructure meeting at 10/2016. For Ellen and I, our budget is good, the landlord project is on course. Our parks and rec, they're very busy doing maintenance on the different parks, and I guess Chestnut Street Park is ready for electric, and maybe Reynolds Terrace Lane Park has getting electric, and South and Cherry is not in bad condition, and the riverfront restoration, the flood damage is still on course. They're worried about, we have a problem with trees, 90-plus ash trees that are possibly diseased, so they have to do some work on taking care of those. And our new, our new, Justin, what Justin was, you were?
Regional Recreation Director.
Regional Recreation Director, sorry. We have a new one, his name is Michael Lane, he's a landscape architect, and he'll be starting his, he'll be starting his service shortly, I guess, right?
Yeah, he actually started, I think, on 26th of October, so he's already been there for a few weeks, and I've had the chance to kind of get him oriented a little bit to some of the projects that he'll be inheriting.
And so that's pretty much, oh, and as far as our streets and infrastructure are, I guess they flushed, they were doing all flushing of the hydrants, and store water, we had a bad stormwater pipe break in the manner, and they're short on crews yet, so that's always a, you know, an issue for right now. So, and that's pretty much it for infrastructure.
Good. Thank you. Economic Development and Business Liaison, anything? Seized Transportation, councillor call.
That will be in our packet for next week.
Ricketts Center, councillor Paez?
I want to do a report, I don't know why.
Okay. Pottstown School Board, Kurt Heidel here? Anyone from the School Board? Ad Hoc Zoning, councillor Prossel.
No meeting.
No meeting. Animal Control, Vice President Miller?
Animal Committee, but that, but that does bring up a...
Whatever.
We're making a recommendation to put out an RFP for ACO, Animal Control Officer. It's been more than 11 years since that has been, that has been reviewed, so it's pretty much well past time that we, that we do that and see what's out there. And I just want to let everybody know that Tallemanson Township opted out for kennel use. If you don't know where that is, it's 20 mi, 22 miles one way from the Borough of Pottstown, it's in the 215 area code, so I fully expected and had hoped that Townships that that far outlying would opt out.
Okay. Thank you.
Is the update ready?
No, and we'll make sure that that update is complete before, before it goes out.
All right. Very good. Chief Trum Heller, Safety.
Good evening, council. As a way of reminder, speed issues in your ward, please make me aware of them, and we will do studies. We recently completed a study on Third Street for speed, and basically what you get is, you would get a report very similar to this, and I would email it to you. It has a lot of the data, but it really just gives you a summary page, and in this case, you can see 1% of the vehicles were speeding. So it gives you a very good reference to whether or not you have a speeding problem, and that's generally how we address all complaints, is start with speeding. So if somebody says we have a speeding problem on such and such a road, we start with a traffic study to, in fact, verify that. So just a reminder, if you have any area in your ward that you would like done, we have invisible boxes that they, in this case, we actually put the box up on the, and we got a phone call because somebody thought, somebody put a bomb on the telephone pole, it was actually our box, so we explained to them what it was, and they were okay. The Coffee with Cops program was well received. We had it at the Connections on High, and we will be planning for December for the next one, and we've had three locations that actually came forward to us and asked for it. One is actually the Community College, one is Ice House Deli, and the other is McDonald's. So we will select a place, and we will, we will get it out to you in advance so that you're aware of it, and I certainly would like you to stop in and have a cup of coffee with the police. If you remember correctly, we had, we also were with the NAACP and the DA's office for the picnic with police, and we had it at Chestnut Street Park, it was a little rainy that day, but it was a very well-received event, and we had probably at least 100 people there, and it was, it was just, it was just a good day. Just so you're aware, we started, we started carrying the loxin, which is the drug named Narcan. We started carrying it in May, and to date, we have 15 saves with it. So we have been very busy with that. And for those of you who are waiting, the camera project is underway. We have, they have been doing some site preparation here in Borough Hall, and they, we identified where we want the monitors, they'll be in the, they'll be in the radio room, so, but everything is underway, and I suspect, I'm hoping, by the end of the month or the middle of December, that it'll be completed.
Great.
That's what I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor's Report. Mayor Thomas.
Thank you, President Weand. I'd just like to begin my report with a couple of statistics that are very positive from the September data from the Pottstown Police Department. And this is to recognize several wards with extremely low incidents, meaning there is an absence, there is no incidence of this nature. In the fifth and seventh wards in September, there were no narcotics violations. In the seventh ward, no burglary, no theft, no public drunkenness. Why do I mention this today as part of my, my report? Why do I mention this? Because the things that are good and where there is an absence of things that are disruptive and disturbing and alarming, we have to really look closely and see what's happening different in those places than in the places where there's high incidence of narcotics violations, high incidence of burglary, theft, and crime. Is it always a one-sided issue? Not always. Sometimes a door isn't locked, sometimes all the doors are locked, and there's no way that there can be penetration by burglary. So we can take a simple lesson from that, but we can also understand that we are at war. You know, you hear these terms of Cold War and threats of war, rumors of war, but the world is actually at risk. You know, that used to be a term that was used for troubled youth, you know, we'd say, we have troubled, at-risk youth. But now we're looking at a, at a time in our nation and in our world when we're actually at war, in a time of peace, because the world has been placed at risk. One of the risks is the current war on opiates. This Monday, this past Monday, there was a meeting here that was supported by a 501(c) organization and also Montgomery County, which has now opened up the distribution of Narcan for any citizen that has a need to have Narcan. I was at that meeting, and both my husband and I received kits, just in case there was any incident where we would run into an occasion where we might have to save a life through the use of Narcan. At that meeting, there were close to 50 individuals that were here, and each of those individuals took a Narcan kit out of this room. They took an understanding that they were in for the win for the person's life, and it's good to hear that our police department is seeing the results of the availability and the training of Narcan distribution to them as a force. To take this to the citizen level and to make it available to people who have an identified need or to citizens who would like to help in saving a life, and the, the new mantra behind this is, if someone is sick with the addiction to heroin, the only way they can get better is if they're alive. So I just want to not only thank the county and Commissioner Arkush, who is a medical personnel, co-signing on this and looking into the details in the background, as well as the police forces that have been trained, the majority of which are in our, in Montgomery County, have been completely trained. I was able to attend and as well host several events regarding information that was made available for people who were going to the polls to vote. This was an information session held by the Faith and Freedom Coalition. It's coordinated by Larry Denver in Pennsylvania, and this was held at Connections on High, and it was an event that expanded the regional influence in continuous, in a continuous flow, you know, there's concentric engagement farther than Pottstown, with Pottstown at the center. So for those who were able to attend, I would just like to thank them for a very, very resourceful, informative, and nonpartisan event, and those individuals came from Lancaster, Washington DC, Philadelphia, Delaware, and many other locations. I would just like to congratulate the Citizens Leadership Academy as they continue to promote civic engagement by not only giving out information, but also encouraging increased momentum among the citizens on issues that involve Pottstown. As a result of everyone expressing their, not only patriotism, but our civic responsibilities to vote yesterday, I would just ask, as this is being televised, that as a constituency, we realize today we can choose to reset. You know, I always look at things that are working as a battery, and a battery has two ends, it has a positive end and a negative end, and I feel that as we move forward as Pottstown, you know, I hear the slogans, "We are Pottstown." We are Pottstown, and we're well aware of our positives and our forward motions and the good things that are happening, but we cannot escape, and we cannot be dull of hearing or sight, that with every battery, there's a negative end. And if that end works properly, the battery functions. If that end is rusted or corrosive, the battery does not function. Let's remember this in all of our engagements, whether they are personal, whether they're civic, whether they're spiritual, whether they're educational, whatever the nature, remember that there's good and bad, and the triage for the bad helps it to work and function. And I'd just like to mention once again, the Equity First Initiative, and I have some papers here that I'm going to leave here at the end. So what are, what are we saying about education with Equity First? We know that the budget was passed, we know that it was heralded as an equal funding budget, and this is one of the misnomers in understanding, that equal is not equitable. If you have underfunded districts and you have over-funded districts, the distribution has to be changed to allow the underfunded to come up in their receipt of funding. The only way you can do that is by changing the ratio of the distribution from equal to equitable. So coming up in the next budget season, I hope that we can be a part of the force of bringing clarity to stop the understandings of things that are not equitable, being promoted as equal, and damaging even our own receipt of funds here in the Pottstown School District. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Number seven is a presentation on Public Financial Management, refinancing the Borough Funds. Ooh, no it's not. Jumped over our manager, Manager's Report, sorry.
The way my voice is working, you might be glad you jumped it. Just a couple of quick items. If you recall, last month, I had asked council if there was an interest in delving into land banking, with the understanding that I would go to the authority in the school district to ensure that there was an interest on their part. The authority took action, they resolved that they would participate and waive fees if a land bank was created, and I will be presenting to the school district tomorrow night, so we should be prepared to enter into discussions at the December council meeting.
Oh, great.
I want to let you know that at Monday night's council meeting, there is part of a newly developed employee recognition program, we will be recognizing some of our civilian staff for their years of service with the Borough. I want to thank councillor Arms, as it was his suggestion that we take a look at the police department's awards program and mirror a program for the civilian employees, so this is the beginning of that program. And I want to remind council also that in honor of the men and women who served or are serving, to ensure our freedom and our military services, Borough Hall will be closed this Friday, the 11th, in honor of Veterans Day. And that's the extent of my report.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Now, we have Jamie Schlesinger coming from Public Financial Management, going to tell us how great we're doing at refinancing our bonds.
Good evening. I was here about a month ago and discussed the opportunity for the Borough to refinance its only outstanding financing, which was a bank loan from 2012 with this bank. We have actually progressed on that process, and we're here tonight to at least give you an update of where we stand and ask you to consider an ordinance at your meeting on the 14th, and I believe there's a copy of that ordinance in your packet. One of the things that we discussed at the meeting was the use of what is called a parameters ordinance, and I'm going to give some more details, at least answer some questions that you may have related to that, but I know we went into detail at the last meeting, but I'd give the public an update. A couple of things that have happened over the last month, and there's some good news here, we just received word late yesterday afternoon, and we just completed today, the bond rating for the Borough has officially been approved by Standard and Poor's, and the Borough's received a double-A credit rating from Standard and Poor's, which is a very, very strong rating. It's what we expected, because we've been utilizing that same type of rating for the authority's debt, but you've never had an actual bond rating over the last few years because you've had bank loan debt.
This is actually for the Borough, not because...
This is just the Borough itself, yes.
Not because we're backing someone else?
Correct. This is just for the Borough. Because previously you didn't have any public debt with a rating, you've now gone through the process, and just today, we've at least completed the, the rating report. I'll have a copy of that report available for you at your meeting on Monday. It just hasn't been finalized yet, there were some, a couple of changes we were adding to it, but from your perspective, a double-A credit rating is very, very strong, the best you can be is triple-A. You don't, there's not that many double As out there, so you should, you know, consider yourself very, very lucky, and you've done a great job with your finances over the few, last few years, because a double A is very, very strong. With that said, however, as you know, last night was the election, and I'll give you a market update, today, just because of the election, there's, there was a lot of uncertainty in the market, so we actually have seen an increase in interest rates pretty dramatically today. The rationale for that is really a couple of things, and people come up with reasons for all these things, fear of inflation, fear of uncertainty in the US economy. We expected this to happen one way or the other, so that's why we weren't selling bonds today, frankly, because we knew we, we had some time before we were ready to sell bonds, so the markets will, will clear up, and hopefully by the time we're ready to go, we'll be able to proceed at a, at a good time. So what we're asking you to consider, as I mentioned earlier, is a, is a parameters ordinance. The concept is simple, and I think I mentioned this a bunch of times last time, flexibility for the Borough to allow us to sell the bonds at a particular time that makes most sense. One thing we do know is we can't sell bonds really any earlier than, than December. We're considering at this point a sale, probably December 8th, that's at least tentative what I'm going to schedule. It's, it's a good time to do it, at least from a, from an amount of debt or issues outstanding at that time. Obviously, if the markets aren't behaving at the time, we won't have the sale, but I believe that is at least a good start as a placeholder at this point to consider this internet auction. What we'd be doing is having an auction that all the bond underwriters in the country would be able to bid on your bonds, again, now with a double-A credit rating. The loan size, the bond size will be about 3.5, 3.6 million, give or take, that's about the size it's going to end up being. The debt will mature in about 15 years, and we will be getting fixed rates from the bond underwriters. The winner of that sale will be whoever provides us the lowest interest rates, makes perfect sense. So obviously, the lower interest rates, the more savings you generate. I can point out, I actually just did a financing for the school district last week, was very, very favorable, they were actually an A1 credit rating, a little bit less than you guys, so it went very well. So the name Pottstown is, is strong in the market, and really is a supply and demand issue when we actually do sell. So again, we're going to watch the market, see where things go, but from our perspective, the considerations for you to have on Monday will be this ordinance. It was advertised, there's a copy in your, in your packet, we're asking you to consider a higher amount than what I suggested, I mentioned it would be about 3.5, 3.6 million dollars. This will be an ordinance for 4.2 million dollars, and the rationale for that is to give us, us, as in PFM, the flexibility to adjust the principal payments depending on how the bonds are structured once we get the interest rates. We expect it to be this 3.5, 3.6 million dollar range, but we have to have the higher amounts to give us some flexibility. We're also asking you to have a higher interest rate as well, a 5.5%. Again, this is all about filing with the Commonwealth and for flexibility purposes. I expect the overall interest rate to be about 2.3% overall, that's what will provide the savings that we're going to be talking about tonight. And finally, one of the major considerations here is a minimum savings threshold. the principal payments, depending on how the bonds are structured, once we get the interest rates. We expect it to be this 3.5, 3.6 million dollar range, but we have to have the higher amounts to give us some flexibility. We're also asking you to have a higher interest rate as well, a 5.5%. Again, this is all about filing with the Commonwealth and for flexibility purposes. I expect the overall interest rate to be about 2.3% overall. That's what will provide the savings that we're going to be talking about tonight. And finally, one of the major considerations here is a minimum savings threshold. We're suggesting you use a 2% savings threshold. Doesn't mean that we will get 2%, we just have to establish one for purposes of filing with the Commonwealth. Right now, we think the savings are around the 4% range. Hopefully, when the markets behave a little bit, maybe we'll get a little more than that. The savings were a little higher a month or so ago, so I'm being completely honest with you where the market is today. And obviously, I want to keep you updated, and I will obviously be in touch with the administration when we get closer to the potential sale. I'll stop for a second. I'm going to point you to, and I think this is all we should care about for right now, where we are today, is page three. This is similar to what we saw at the last meeting. I had a summary page of what the refinancing is. Again, this is based on current conditions. Obviously, tomorrow, rates will change, so who knows what it will be. But we think the savings right now are, net of all fees, about $160,000. It's a little lower than I showed last, last month, a little lower than I showed the previous month. But from my consideration, the savings are a little over 4%, which I think is valuable. I think I should also point out, the other benefit of doing this refinancing, in addition to saving money from the previous expected interest rates, we would remove some interest rate risk associated with the bank loan. The numbers that we're talking about here are making an assumption of what we think the bank loan would be. It could go higher, actually. So that's another benefit to doing this refinancing. We'd remove any interest rate risk, which is capped at 5.25%. Last section, I will point out, and it's only about the timing. It's on the last page. If you look at page 10, it's just a chart of the timing here. We're about two-thirds the way through the process. As I mentioned, we've gotten to the rating at this point. Again, tonight, we're talking about the parameters, and certainly, if you have any questions, again, I'd be happy to answer any of them. We'd ask you to consider the adoption of the ordinance on the 14th. And then conceivably, if all things go well, we would sell bonds on February 8th. February, I'm sorry, February. December 8th, and we'd have a settlement early next year. So that's when all the money would be transferred to pay off the old debt. Again, if the market doesn't behave, we'll adjust that and push off the sale for another time. Questions?
Mr. President, you don't need any action tonight, but Monday evening, the ordinance that Jamie's talking about will require a roll call vote for purposes of borrowing under the Unit Debt Act. And the ordinance is, you already have the ordinance, you think, in your packet, so it would be listed from Monday evening. Yeah, I'm not sure if you have the full ordinance or not.
Yeah, the full ordinance, I believe, is in the back of your packet, not within my packet that I sent.
Yeah, it's not, it's not within the handout.
And I should point out, I will not be attending the meeting on Monday night, so certainly, if you can't think anything tonight, or if you have questions between now and then, feel free to contact me, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, sir.
Keep your fingers crossed, and hopefully we'll get to the finish line with some good savings.
Number eight is a presentation, Dawn Glick. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. My packet or my little presentation's a little less formal. It's a little picture book that we circulated to you guys to kind of have a summary of last year's event. I was asked to present the Good, the Bad, and the Ugly. So I don't think there's any ugly. But the good, I think, is the event was very well received this past year. We were very pleased with the turnout. We had over 300 racers, a lot of kids racing, and we had a lot of spectators out. The weather was wonderful, and I think that, you know, we left the town in as good, if not better, condition than what we found it after cleaning the streets and putting up various posters and banners and signs. I think that people were excited about the race, and the feedback during the race, as well as the weeks after the race, were very positive. The social media presence was enormous. And we had one person on social media that posted something that wasn't very pleasant about being inconvenienced with parking. And there was all plethora of people that jumped all over that person and defended the borough and the race and the fun event and festivities that it brought to the town. So that was really nice to see that kind of happening. There are things that we need to work on. There are things that we can do better. There are certainly things that we receive feedback on that I think would be helpful. For example, establishing a website for the bike race would help the people in the borough be more informed. Clearly, the racers knew what was going on because of the mechanisms at which they register for a race and get information, and we flooded them with things. Thanks to Mark, we've aligned with the Valley Forge Sports and Tourism Organization to promote the race. And we are also working with an advertising organization to enhance the branding of the race. We've entered into a dialogue with the half marathon people to really create a festive sports weekend. Last year, we made an active effort to avoid the same weekend as the half marathon. We'd like to propose to you this year that we actually bond with them and create a Saturday, Sunday event in Pottstown to be a very festive sports weekend. That would allow us to do a great deal more marketing and to enhance the image of the borough in that nature. Kind of getting ahead of myself, but that weekend we're looking at is July 15, 16. Marathon 15, bike race 16. And so it would be the morning of the 15th for the marathon, the afternoon and early evening for the bike race on the 16th.
We're not getting...
To kind of just summarize things, I felt like we were incredibly supported by the borough. The police department could not have been better. They were absolutely fabulous. Everything from strategic location of barricades to closing down the roads and controlling traffic. It was excellent. And you know, when you walk in the next morning on a Monday to turn in the keys and you're met with a statement, "You know what we need to do next year?", you kind of know you've arrived. And I think that was a really positive experience. I thought that was very helpful. Last but not least, I'm open to your suggestions and any other comments you might want to have. We have now met with the major sponsors of the race from last year and solicited their feedback. They're all in, again. Should you see it acceptable for us to do this again next year, we're willing to do that. And we would like to add one little caveat, and this is in response to some of the sponsors looking to get more engaged and more participation. We would like to add a corporate challenge to the bike race this year. It would be four laps, four-member team. We would like to challenge the Borough Council to put together a team. We'd like to challenge the Police Department to put together a team. All of the sponsors of the race will put together a team. So we already have Sly Fox, Exelon, Pottstown Hospital, Bike Sport, and Allard Energy, all putting a team in. Oh, and the Valley Forge Tourism Organization is going to do it in revolutionary gear. So we challenge you to be as crazy as you want to be to promote the borough and just have some fun with it. We figured four laps around the race, everyone in whatever attire they want is a wonderful promotional event and showcase people supporting the race.
I've got my helmet ready.
You go.
Are you going to lead our team?
And we will have emergency medicine and...
Dawn, do you have a weekend? Do you know what weekend you're talking about?
July 15, 16. Marathon 15, bike race 16.
Thank you.
And that has not, I mean, we've just talked about that internally, obviously.
Right.
I know the marathon has their permit, but, you know, I wanted to make sure before I was so forward as to say, hey, we want to jump on the back end of your weekend, that I talked to them. And I actually did speak with Chris on a couple of occasions. And so he's very supportive and willing to do some joint marketing.
Good. For council's information, the half marathon does not require a street closure, so it wouldn't be a two-day street closure.
Or barricades.
Right.
So that makes it easy.
Thank you for having a successful race. I'd just like to mention two calls that I did receive regarding people that were upset that they couldn't get access into their church. So maybe if you can outreach to the churches that are in the footprint of the blockade, just, you know, as a courtesy, because they were just saying, they didn't know anything about it.
Every church did have a poster.
Okay.
And I did, I did reach out to each of the churches and contact them by phone and by email. But you're right, you can't hit everybody. We circulated 2,500 postcards, and we still, you know, everybody in and around the course. And you know what? We're going to go to 3,500 next year, because we're going to go out another block.
Okay.
You know, I mean, there's always ways to improve.
And the 93 bus route was also truncated from going to the college. So they did not complete their run, they turned around. So anybody who was, who was waiting, didn't get service. So I don't know who would coordinate with them, but that also did happen. 93 does run.
One sign, do you say?
Not the, not the part, but 93 does run.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, Wendy Egoff from the Salvation Army.
Hi, is it okay to sit here for the presentation? Mayor Thomas and Council President and Council Members, I thank you for the opportunity to come and to present to you a new idea that Salvation Army has. I'd like to talk to you tonight about Pottstown Works. This is a project to combat poverty in our community. As you can see, the numbers here in Pottstown show the need with children living in economic disadvantage and the poverty level being a little bit higher here in the Pottstown area. How we started, we have a small group of volunteers who came to me at the Salvation Army wanting to do something and make a difference. So what we needed in our family residence shelter and our transitional housing program was job skills. These three women came and have faithfully worked with us every Tuesday night for the last four years, teaching job skills to our residents. With this program, we've had over 200 resumes written for the people in our programs. We've had some success stories that I'd like to share with you. Dan was a single father of five, and they were ages six and under, by the way. He rescued these five children from a deplorable condition. As a result of that, his home was too small, he needed to relocate, and he also lost his job because of the need to raise these children. So he came to us. You can imagine this, getting off the bus with a stroller in hand and these children and their bags just hanging around the stroller. I can still see that day. He was very determined and worked really hard on improving his skills, and he was able to get a job. We had to get very creative with his childcare, and we came up with some creative solutions and help for him. He was able to get employment and sustain employment. He is now at Montgomery County Community College and working at improving his skills to get a better sustaining job. Andrea, a single mother with no support system, came to the Salvation Army with two small children, and on her very first night, attended job skills and said, "I won't be here long." She was a very, very determined young woman, and she also is very successful now and successfully employed and has purchased herself a car. We also have some challenges. We only meet one night a week with our residents, and we are having sometimes difficulty finding job skills that match the skill sets of the people we have. And we also discovered sustaining employment was an issue. The other issue we have is not having communication after people leave our sheltering program. We also had requests from other people to open this up to the community. So in seeking a solution, the volunteers and I met, and we did some research. We came across the program Cincinnati Works, and this is the book that a retired couple created who starred the program, Dave and Leanne Phillips, "Why Don't They Just Get a Job?". And it was their dream and their goal to eradicate poverty in Cincinnati, Ohio, as their retirement project. They're into it 20 years now, and it had very good success. They've gotten thousands back to work. They have created some new programs specifically for prisoners coming out of prison and also helping teenagers aging out of the foster care system. You can see that they have a job, a very high job retention rate of over 75%, and they've saved over $35 million in public assistance. So we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We wanted to go out and study this program. We took a field trip to Cincinnati and spoke personally with Dave Phillips. He spent a full day with us, showing us his program, and also shared with us his new dream is to replicate this program in other communities, to help other communities become more economically self-sufficient. He has now reached out to 20 communities and working with 20 different communities. Ours will be the first community in Pennsylvania. We're excited about that. So what Cincinnati Works looks like is they minister to job seekers in poverty who are willing and capable of working. There's an interviewing process to find out what are the barriers people have so that they can help overcome them. Drug screenings are done. And then there is a very intensive 33-hour-a-week job training on how to build a resume and how to look for a job, find a job, mock interviewing. And our aha moment there was they have a mentorship program to help people maintain and keep jobs. So Dave challenged us and said, "Go find the money, and I'll help you get started." We came home. We were able to apply for a grant through the Salvation Army, the Thomas Lyle Williams Grant. This grant is for three years, 100% funded the first year, 75% the second, and 50% the third year. We have a community, a committee working on rolling this out, and Dave Phillips will be visiting us on December 7th to address our community at Community Breakfast. So we believe that if we can work on this program as a community, because we realize that there are other similar programs that we are working to collaborate with, we don't want to duplicate services, we want to work together. We also need to work with social services to overcome the many barriers that people face. So we are in contact now with many of those agencies and organizations trying to work on a plan. We believe that we can help people become economically self-sufficient, first of all, sustaining jobs for a year or more, and then getting additional training to getting self-sufficient jobs to bring people off some of the welfare programs that they're currently on. We want to really work to have our members be actively involved in the community, and we also want to match the needs of the businesses with the skill set of people who need employment. Those are our goals. So we believe that when we help families in this situation, it will also boost the economy. I heard you earlier talk about bringing businesses in. We are very favorable to that. We are talking to different people, and we would love to partner and work together with businesses, with organizations, to solve this problem. We believe that will save a lot of tax dollars. So what we need is, we need employers to become involved, and we need volunteers to become job coaches and mentors for people to help them sustain their jobs, to help talk through, working through the barriers. And we really need your support and your leadership. So Dave Phillips will be here on December 7th, and if you would be interested, feel free to contact me, and we would love to have you come to that breakfast. Can I answer any questions? Can I answer any questions?
Any questions from Council?
Is the program a Salvation Army or is it just a standalone?
It's a standalone program.
And the area in Cincinnati, did it have, one of the things that obviously is a challenge in the borough of Pottstown is we are lacking employment for, for many of our residents. So in, in Cincinnati, Ohio, were there more jobs already available before they embarked upon this program there?
They were actually so concerned that there would be enough jobs for people in Cincinnati, that they would have more workers than jobs available. So as it turns out, it was a process over years, working that through and encouraging businesses in Cincinnati, and then getting to know those businesses and what those businesses expected from employees, and then training employees to match the skill set. So that is, we will be working with some other organizations to help people get additional skills. We have a list, a whole list of people that we will be working with to do that.
Thank you. Okay. I think it's also important to, to mention, especially for young people who maybe have not got a job yet, but have chosen to use recreational drugs in their spare time, and also adults who are battling with addiction, that you have to pass a drug screen in order to be employed. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Yes. This program is really very serious about only accepting people who are ready, willing, and able to work. And part of the requirement of the program is passing the drug screen because we know that that's what employers need and want, to have drug-free people. If you, the training is an intensive one-week training, and if you miss coming to the training on time, you're done. You can sign up again and for another session, but for that session, you will no longer be accepted because we want to send the message that employers expect you to be at work, expect you to be at work on time. And so we want people to be very serious about that.
Is your program open to everybody or just a specific group of, of individuals?
It's open to anybody who is in need of job skills and work. Okay? We're specifically targeting poverty, but because it's not a grant from the government, it's a private grant, we have a lot of leeway in defining that. So anybody who wants to work, and we would really consider teenagers.
The next question I have is, because this is a community that does have a high rate of recidivism, and there are many individuals that have longstanding felony charges, decades old, so is there any type of information you'd like to give about a misdemeanor summary and felony and who's hireable in those categories?
So that is one of the very serious issues that we've had with some people that we work with currently in our programs at the Salvation Army. And we work to help people get records expunged. It's quite challenging sometimes. We try to help them through the barriers. We'll be working with the expungement process that's now happening here, weekly in Pottstown. We'll be looking through, for the defender's office to help us with some of that. And so we're also looking for second chance employers. And when we do that, we look at what, what charges they would consider as far as hiring people and what charges would be unacceptable. There are some fields that, that you just can't hire second chance employees because of the nature of the business. There are certain restrictions in nursing home care. There are certain restrictions when you're working with children, so we would take those into consideration. So we don't want to falsely lead people into believing that they can do jobs that they're not qualified for. Sometimes education programs do not fully inform people who have records that they will never be employed in that field. So we want to be very clear about that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm also glad that you were at the table for the Pottstown trauma-informed community because, you know, there's so many intersections between how people live and think. And so just thank you for this opportunity and the grant.
Absolutely. Yes. We see Pottstown Trauma-Informed Community Connection as key. We work with people in trauma every day, and we realize that that plays a huge factor in people getting jobs. Sometimes somebody who's depressed is misinterpreted as somebody who is lazy, which is not the case. So taking a look at that barrier of depression and getting assistance can really help somebody move very forward quickly. And it's been a joy to watch those successes. We want to see more here in Pottstown.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next is number ten, a presentation from the Hill School about the Quad Rivium.
Hi, good evening. I'm, I'm Don Silverson from the Hill School. With me tonight is Robin Rose, our Construction Project Manager, and Paul Small from Berry IZ Associates. Berry's our engineering consultant, helping us with the land development process. We have a short visual presentation.
Okay.
If, if the Council would like to see that, just to give you an overview of the project.
Yes.
Basically, we're here to seek approval of our land development plan for this project. The project we're talking about tonight is, is called the Quad Rivium, and it's a, it's a science building which will integrate the science, science subjects, chemistry, biology, and physics, along with engineering and mathematics, all be located in, in one facility. All right, so, thank you. This facility is located in the interior of our campus. What you're looking at is an aerial view of the Ryan Library. And essentially, we're proposing to build an addition to the Ryan Library, which would house this, this facility. There you can see the Ryan Library is located in the interior of our campus, on the main quad, directly across from Alumni Chapel and adjacent to our Academic Center and the upper school dormitories. And looking east, it looks out on the, our soccer pitch and residential, the residential part of our campus. As I said, the project consists of a, an addition to the Ryan Library. It'll be a, a three-story addition with classrooms, laboratories, meeting spaces. And in the center, I'll show you a photograph of that, or a drawing of that in a minute, an atrium, a three-story atrium, which will be a, a gathering space for the students. We're also going to reconfigure, excuse me, the traffic circulation and parking areas up on this part of the campus. The road will be rerouted around the facility, and then we'll construct a circular drive, which will have parking on the, the outer rim of that exterior circle. There's a rendering of the, of the facility. You can see it facing east onto that circular drive. It's a, like I said, a three-story addition. It's going to be constructed, or it's been designed to fit into the architecture of the campus. There's a view from the south. You can see the, the atrium, which is the main entry for the students and faculty. And here you see the floor plan of the entry level with the atrium in the center. And to the right is the engineering laboratories and classrooms. And then we've got some, some other, other classrooms, physics, located on the first There's a, another shot of the atrium, which will basically expose the east wall of the old Ryan Library. It's, the architect, I think, had a, a nice idea. It's essentially pointing the old and the new. It'll dispose the old wall, and, and that'll be incorporated into this grand interior space with a glass ceiling. You can see some classrooms off the first floor. The lower level, we're still in the process of designing, you know, how the spaces will be used, but we'll have most of our mechanical facilities located down there. On the second level, we'll have additional classrooms and conference rooms and meeting space. And there you can see how the floors are stacked up, looking, looking east from the, from the atrium. The third level, we'll have chemistry primarily because of the need to ventilate and exhaust the chem labs. There's a cross-section of the facility. And again, another rendering looking back from the east towards the, towards the building. So that's, that's kind of an overview of the program and what the facility would look like. Paul and Robin are here, if you have questions about the site development, stormwater management, parking, things like that.
Let me bring Council up to speed because actually this land development was reviewed early this year by the Planning Commission. I think it was February and March, it underwent plan review. At that time, the Planning Commission, following review by the Borough Engineer, was satisfied that the plan itself complied with the ordinance. I believe there were a few waivers of the SADO that were requested. The Planning Commission did recommend those. We can certainly see that you have in your packet for Monday night, those letters and that specific information. But I think what occurred at that time was the only outstanding issue, if I'm, memory serves me correctly, was the requirement of a fee in lieu of open space or the dedication of open space. The Planning Commission was of the opinion that the open space, given the fact that this is internal to the Hill School, really wouldn't do the borough any good. So rather than looking for a dedication of open space internal to the campus, they suggested to Borough Council that Council take a fee in lieu of open space. And I don't know that the Hill School was in any particular rush to move the project forward. And so it was, it's been on hold since the March meeting of the Planning Commission.
Right.
And now you're hearing about the project tonight. So I think the issue of the open space, as far as I know, is still outstanding. And Don, I don't know if you have any issues or proposals for Council to consider.
Yeah, I do. We're adding a little over seventeen thousand square feet of impervious space as a result of the, the building addition and the parking areas and the rerouting of the traffic. And I've talked with Mr. Flanders, so we've been back and forth over the past several months with, with some ideas about a reasonable fee to pay in lieu of dedicating open space. And we're here tonight to propose a fee of seventy-five hundred dollars. We've done some comparable research. We've looked at some of our other open space properties, the golf course primarily, and what they, what they're assessed at, and we've looked at some other comparable real estate sales. Mark squeezed a few extra dollars out of me, but I'm, I'm comfortable with seventy-five hundred if, if that's acceptable to the Council.
Good. Any comment?
Silverson's absolutely correct. We've been there back and forth for a while and arrived at the seventy-five hundred. I think it's also important to point out that when this project takes off, we're probably looking at about three hundred thousand in permit fees, thereabouts, plus local contractors working. Hopefully more attractiveness of the school, so I think it's a win for, for everybody.
Yeah, this is, for us, it's a massive project. I think even for the borough, it's a considerable scale. It's going to be about forty thousand square feet of construction. The estimated construction cost is about twenty-one million dollars.
Okay.
So there'll be lots of labor, materials, contractors, subcontractors involved in the project. And as, as Mark said, the, the permit fees will be substantial on the project.
Could, could you pull your permits next month so we can close our budget?
I wish we could.
Okay. Any comment from Council? Otherwise, we'll list it for Monday evening.
I was wondering, where, did, did you have a science center lab before in another area of the Hill School?
We did. We have a, the Wyner Science Building, which was built in the thirties, and it's, it's still in use. It's very outdated. The laboratories are small. It doesn't have the, the infrastructure that you need to teach kids, particularly engineering. It doesn't have the kind of space that you need, that kids need to learn engineering principles, assemble the robots and different products.
So now that area, what is that going to do?
That building will be repurposed after we complete construction of this and relocate some of our humanities, history, social studies possibly in that facility.
Okay, thank you.
So you are, you're making an effort to hire local contractors or subcontractors for some of the work?
We always do. We, Wilson Construction is the construction manager for the project. They've been selected. They've done a number of projects for the Hill over the years. They're located in Lancaster. And my experience in the ten years I've been at Hill, they, they, they give opportunities to local contractors to build on mechanical systems and all aspects of the project. And we certainly encourage that. We, we do business with a lot of subcontractors in the area every year, and we make them aware of the project and connect them with us.
The other issue is that we're looking at a lead goal for this project, and part of, one of our points is to buy materials within five hundred square miles, or miles, I should say, of Pottstown. So that's one of our lead points.
Okay.
Five hundred miles.
Five hundred miles of Pottstown. For materials.
I like the use of the atrium to kind of separate the two buildings. It doesn't seem to concur with the existing architecture.
Nice. I, I will apologize for my humor, but the real question is, do you plan on moving on this shortly, and would the permits?
We have about a, a third of the project raised so far, and our advancement office has hard worked to, to raise the rest of the money. We're hopeful that sometime in 2017, we'll be able to break down this.
So in, in reality, you would be pulling the permits next year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's our goal.
I, I think it's great. Please invite us to the open house.
Oh, no question. As I told Mark, I think there are opportunities here for the community to use these facilities. They're going to be terrific, and also to work with the local schools to.
Great.
Invite them into our campus so they can have access to these facilities and our teachers.
I like it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
And we'll list us for Monday evening.
Yeah, Mr. President, for purposes of the agenda on Monday, there actually be two motions. We'll see to it that you have the information on the waivers that have been requested. We'll also see to you have the engineer's last review letter.
Mm-hmm.
And so the action would be a motion to approve the plan and grant the waivers, if that's Council's desire.
Very good. Thank you. Number eleven's a presentation from in-house about our 2017 budget.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to present the Borough of Pottstown 2017 Budget. And first, I'd like to review some of the assessment facts. Out of eighty-five hundred parcels billed for the taxes, three hundred twenty-six are tax exempt. About five years ago, the total was around three hundred eight, and slowly, we've increased them through churches and their parsonages. I've done the calculation, if all the tax-exempt parcels were to pay their taxes on their properties, the revenue that the borough would receive is one point three million. So that's what we, we don't get as a result of the tax-exempt properties. In 2005 and 2006, there were no tax increases. And then in the years 2007 to 2012, there were significant tax increases to cover the expenses. And I believe there actually was some layoffs at the end of 2009 during that time.
Eliminations?
Eliminations, yes. In 2013, there was no tax increase. In 2014, we did a one percent tax increase. And then again, in 2015 and 16, there was no tax increase. Another dilemma that the borough has faced is the property owners going and applying to the county to have their properties reassessed. So I did a little chart here to show over the past five years, you can see in You can see in the column that says "assessment decrease," that is the total amount in that year that the assessment the county approved. The number of properties on the first row in 2012 was three hundred twelve were granted reassessments. Forty-four were denied, and it came to a dollar value of the sixty-five thousand eight hundred seventy-eight. So that continued to happen through thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and the year 2016, you can see two hundred nine property owners applied for a reassessment, and only thirty were denied from the county. So I show the totals there at the bottom of two hundred twenty-four thousand is what we've lost in reassessment. Along the same line of the reassessment, I can only get back to nineteen ninety-nine because the county changed the way the assessment numbers were. But we're actually lower than what we were back in nineteen ninety-nine, the total value. So this 2017 proposed budget is at eight hundred six million. So you can see that it has took a little increase around 2013, but then went back down. And I know we've showed this before, but it helps to reinforce that seven percent of the total bill that the borough residents pay goes to the county. Nineteen percent goes to the borough, and the largest portion goes to the school district. And here we are with the different funds for the borough, from the general fund down all the way through to the developers' escrow, all having a balanced budget except for the general fund, which you can see is in the deficit of two sixty-nine, two hundred twenty-five. So just a couple highlights on the budget. We've decreased from the 2016 by about four hundred one. Right, this is the general fund. I'm just highlighting the general fund. So what we see is there's not enough revenues to cover the expenses. In past years, we decided to set aside two hundred fifty thousand each year to cover the OPEB liability. There just isn't enough to do that in the year 2017. In the licensing and inspections department, we moved some wages towards the clean and lean, which they should have been. It was a proper allocation. These are all some of the efforts to decrease the deficit, to bring it down to where it was. The public works water distribution staff, we moved that to the Fund O6 Water Fund. It was in the general fund, and it got reimbursed to the general fund from the water fund. So it was cleaner just to have it direct to Fund Six. And the capital expenses for 2017 were limited to two police cars and the annual radio payment to the county. And through very rigorous discussions, the health care insurance, we feel is down to a seven percent increase. We started out at something like twenty and worked our way down. And just to give a historical, you can see what from 2015 to 16, it was a three percent. From 2014 to 15, a nine. And back in 2013 into 2014, it was eleven percent increase.
Council may recall, last month I reported out on the budget status, we started at twenty percent. As we planned this budget, we planned it at fifteen percent. Through a new carrier, we were able to get it to eleven percent. And then through some plan design changes, we believe we can get it down to seven percent. Some other things that we changed from that original overage in the general fund, through attrition, we're going to eliminate a position that is currently vacant in licensing inspections. It'd be a front desk position, for lack of a better descriptor. We had a new administrative assistant position to refill a position that's been vacant for a few years in the police department. We took that off of the table. And we also had a assistant director of public works prepared to put them in place so that we had some succession plan in place for Doug so that he could start imparting his knowledge on someone else before he decides to retire, which hopefully won't be for a long time, Doug. We've removed that from consideration. So Janice, go ahead from there, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah, the original request, I believe, from the chief was for four police vehicles. Is that correct, Rick? We reduced that to...
You might explain the problem, but that's based on keeping our service, the service ability of the...
There is a, both on the civilian side and the police side, there is a fleet maintenance program in place. The council, I'd say since the 1990s, has been attempting to adhere to, simply to keep the fleet in service, have serviceable vehicles on the street. This will be a deviation from that fleet maintenance plan, but I don't see any other way around it at this point.
With some of the other fund highlights in the park, there are continuing operations of the mini golf. I understand that the thirty-three percent increase in their operations during 2016. And there's a future development of the T-Rac program and improved playground at the Pollock Park. The water fund has the scheduled main replacements. There's work on the new automated meter reading system and repainting of the water tanks. The O-seven parking lots is continued addition of parking kiosks with new signage and lighting. The sewer fund has main replacements, continued plant modifications, and the dryer system, they're working on spare parts inventory. And Bob has been big in working on the asset management program that's finally up and running. There's a lot more work to come in the future on that. The airport is continued improvements to the facilities there under the operations of Fly Elite. And the fire fund has budgeted a full-time chief and marshal. They're required turnout gear, replacing one of the older vehicles, new radios, and other equipment as necessary.
So it's important to note that the funds that Janice just went over, four, six, seven, eight, nine, and fourteen, are balanced funds in this budget. And as you're going through this process, consider each of the funds as a separate account. They don't interplay with one another.
Mini business.
Exactly. A mini business in and of itself. The funds, for instance, in Fund Four cannot be used to fix the deficit in Fund One. Just because I know several counselors have come to me and said, just shift the money from one account to another. Can't legally do that. Wish we could.
The capital policy plan, Fund Thirty-One, and we had established a policy to shift expenses to Fund Thirty-One and fund it from the general fund reserve on the years when our general fund reserve is healthy enough. This year, we're not going to be making that shift. We're just going to purchase the two police vehicles that get outfitted and the county radio payment. The Gatsby fifty-four OPEB, that's the other post-employment benefits. We started this contribution back in 2013. As I mentioned earlier, we're not going to do that for 2017. It just didn't fit in the budget, with hopes to continue making that payment in the future This is a recap of what we've done in the past. There's really two methods that you can do in balancing the budget. You can, number one, take it from reserves, or, number two, you're moving the tax millage around without actually increasing the millage. So I wanted to show here, in 2014, we took a hundred fifty-four, nine hundred thirty-six to balance the budget. And again, in 2015, we took eighty thousand. This is from the general fund reserves to balance the budget. At the end of 2015, there was a large amount that we were over, the eight hundred fifty-one, two seventy-five. Several circumstances, the police had, I believe they were down quite a few officers till we hired the new ones. We had the large snowfall that incurred a lot of expenses in the snow removal. The public works was short some staff, so there was a lot of overtime. And then again, in 2016, we took two hundred twenty-four thousand to balance the budget. So I'm showing that we've pretty much dug into our reserves to the point where it's not an option again to do that this year. The second way was moving the tax millage around, which I'm showing here, that was done in 2015 and 16, and again in 2017. In 2015, we had, we were able to take some of the debt service tax millage, which I haven't read, and we moved it up to the general fund. In 2016, we did the same thing. We took some out of debt service we didn't need it, moved it to the fire library and the general fund. And in 2017, because we're refinancing the borough loan to the bond, we have the savings that we could shift millage up to the general fund, but just for this year. So next year, when you're sitting here at this time doing the 2018 budget, that point five seven needs to come back down to debt service.
Janice, if council were to choose to shift funds from reserves to make up the deficit, would we be able to maintain the minimum balance in our reserves?
It doesn't look like it now. If we try to stick with the fifteen to twenty percent, I'm looking at what's coming till the end of the year, and it would be darn close.
And if council were to shift from reserves from the general fund, would they be able to make the bills? Or would they have to take out a tax anticipation notice?
I feel like we would be short funds from January to March. That's where you need to have your reserve to pay your bills before taxes come in.
Through all the diligent work of your staff, we were commended this evening for earning a double-A bond rating. And if we start taking too many out of reserves, there's the likelihood we may lose that rating for future financing. Okay?
So the borough has two departments that directly affect the general fund, and that would be the police and the LNI department. They're the two departments that, they provide the most critical services to the public. In order to make any impact on the deficit of the 2017 budget, there would have to be cuts made from these two departments, which would affect the community at large, the residents. It's not a recommendation. All the other costs are spread across the water, sewer, and trash funds for the most part. So as the borough anticipates a few new economic developments, a slight tax increase could turn this deficit into a balanced budget. The current reserves is not able to be used. So I'm making a suggestion, but it is ultimately the council's final decision. To cover the two hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred twenty-five, it would take a three point four nine percent increase, which on an eighty-five thousand dollar home would be twenty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents a year, or a hundred thousand dollar assessed value, would be thirty-four ninety-two. In my next slide, I'm showing you who is affected by the eighty-five thousand dollar So I looked at all the properties and their assessed values and determined that five thousand eight hundred sixty-eight properties are assessed at eighty-five thousand or below. It's, you can see more than half of the assessed properties. Twelve hundred seventy-seven are assessed between eighty-five and one hundred, twelve hundred thirteen are assessed between one hundred and two hundred, and eighty-five assessed between two hundred and three hundred, one hundred seventy between three hundred and nine hundred ninety-nine. And then there's six properties between one million and three point five million, of which four are tax exempt. Any questions and comments?
I'm sorry, Janice, can you go back to the slide about the real estate tax millage, please? And I guess this is more of a comment than anything, just I didn't like the word shifting. The borough code allows the municipality to establish real estate millage rates for different reasons. The general fund millage obviously can be used for anything. The cap in the borough code is thirty mils. We're obviously nowhere near that. The others that you see are special millages that the code allows you to establish up to certain rates. Typically, they're up to a half mil, one mil, or three mil, so they're very limited. And again, shifting, I just didn't like the term. It's, you allocate every year exactly what rate you want the specific millages to be. So you're not shifting, you're just establishing what that amount is each and every year.
Thank you for correcting that.
And Janice was saying was that basically, when you're looking at the debt service millage, in fifteen and sixteen, it was readjusted based upon that, and what was saved was moved up to the general fund millage, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
So again, every year, you set that as a total tax millage. The total at the bottom is the important number to the ratepayers or the taxpayers because that's what they're paying internally. Those numbers can be adjusted every year. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
That's okay.
Shifting sounded something...
Shifting. That's why we have you here, Chuck.
Thank you.
Your general deficit fund is going to change because what was anticipated originally in the refinancing of the bonds is now lower, and now that's uncertain. So that's going to change your number as well because that was figured into that.
But there is, there is some reserves in the debt service fund that can be used for, in 2017, to cover the difference. The reserves have built up in the debt service, and you can't use it for anything else except debt service. So that's why we were able to adjust the millage in 2017.
And that's factored in?
Yeah, even if it does come in less, we're still okay.
That's factored in with the three point four nine percent increase?
Yes.
Dennis?
Go ahead. Ask away.
I mean, and we, in the finance committee today, I said this, I can't agree with any kind of increase in taxes for the residents of the borough. But I think my point is, because this is what I know I'm going to hear tomorrow, well, get rid of this person, get rid of that person, they're getting paid too much. But I think it's important, and I know that you clarified this, salaries are paid, most of them are all spread out over a bunch of funds, so it's not that easy. And I think that's something the public needs to understand, that it's not just get rid of that position because that's not going to help the general fund.
That's correct, yeah. Most of the salaries, because the work is involving water, sewer, trash, they're spread across. The only ones that are directly affected to the general fund is the police and the licensing and inspection.
And I just meant to publicly acknowledge you, Janice. I mean, as I said, I hold you up here and I trust you completely, you know.
I appreciate that.
You do your homework.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I apologize ahead of time. I'm not going to be here on Monday night. I have a medical missionary trip to Guatemala, but Bob will be here in my place and can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
Janice, and I'm concerned too because you mentioned tonight in the finance committee is we're looking two years down the line, we're looking at a much bigger deficit if we continue on the same path that we're on now currently. So we really need to start making some changes that we need to do internally so that we're not in this big hole two years from now, which means...
What you heard in the finance committee is if we don't change, we'll be in a much larger hole in the future.
If you look at even the budget, the budget book that I had done, that everybody had gotten a copy of, and there I had some projections of, I showed my assumptions, and you can read it in there.
The tax increase looks a little bit smaller right now. It's much larger than what it was in 2009, and it's higher.
Yes, yes.
The tax increase is easier to swallow.
And I am going to do the pilot letter requesting the exempted properties again, if they would consider, in the memo, I show what their whole tax would be, and then we asked them if they would just pay a quarter, you know, what it would help, because they still get the services, they still get their streets plowed, and, you know, the police services respond.
Are we working with the school district this year to do a combination letter? I know we had talked about that in one of the joint meetings.
There has been no discussion with the school district on that.
Since you're meeting with the Finance Committee tomorrow evening, is that something that you could bring up at that time?
Certainly can.
Do you have a breakdown of how many are churches, how many are other types of institutions?
Um, I could probably tell by the names on the list. It's mostly the schools. There's, you know, a couple of schools, a lot of churches.
Okay, if there's no more comment, we thank you very much.
Just, and I think council's aware.
So I have a handout for you to take.
Okay.
Required by Borough Code to have a budget passed by the end of December, December 31st. And obviously, you need a tax ordinance passed to fund that budget by December 31st. There are notice requirements that have to be satisfied. They're not long requirements, but if you are not planning on having any special council meetings between now and the end of the year, on Monday night, you would need to authorize staff to advertise and make a draft or tentative budget available for public inspection so that it could be reviewed and considered at your series of meetings in December. Again, if you're having additional meetings or choose to have a meeting later than your typical meeting in December, which would be December 12th, you certainly have more time to consider or not advertise that tentative budget. But again, it's really a timing issue and the number of meetings you wish to have or what else you'd like to do.
And this has been done in the past. And would you explain or clarify or confirm that whatever the budget numbers are in that advertisement are a ceiling and not, we're not committed to that?
Well, the budget you're advertising basically is just a capitulation of expenses and revenues. And obviously, that number's not going to change a significant amount. It could be adjusted. The more important document that you're referring to, Dan, is the tax ordinance.
Okay.
And establishing the real estate tax millage. Yes, you certainly can always make that lower than advertised, but you can't take it and make it higher.
Right.
So even on a situation where you advertise the tentative budget and advertise the tax ordinance to fund that budget, when the ordinance was prepared and presented to council at the December meeting, the millage that you ultimately approved could be less than that maximum, but it couldn't be any greater.
Okay.
I have one quick question. Can the PowerPoint from tonight be posted on the website for the public to see?
Okay, any other questions?
I just have, sorry, one more. Would council consider a special budget meeting?
We could.
Does anyone from, I mean, I, rather than just say, let's advertise as a timing issue, I'd like to see us consider having a special meeting.
We could certainly do that if needed. And things, you know, this is a dynamic situation. It will be changing somewhat. By advertising now, we are locked in not to exceed, or will be. And we may have everything resolved by December 12th. But we're not, we don't have to establish it now. We can always do that later and meet on, you know, New Year's Eve if you'd like.
Yeah, but, but, but we may not, and I'd rather, I'd rather go with Dennis's suggestion only because it'll keep us working, I think, harder to come a little closer to closing this gap. I'd rather wait to advertise. If we're going to agree that we're going to do a special meeting, that we're, if the majority of council will agree that we're going to do a special meeting, there is no rush.
But we don't have to schedule that now. We just agree we can, if needed.
Right, but, but meaning we don't have to advertise now because we know we're going to settle this before the end of the year.
I think meaning in November, if we need it, we can schedule it.
It might be that we settle on the 12th. We can always go to the special meeting, but it's a matter of legally getting the advertisement out in time. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I think the point of constriction here is that right now, the only meeting that you have scheduled between now and getting a budget passed is Monday night. So that's your last time to formally take action and authorize that the budget and the tax ordinance be advertised. You can't wait till December 7th because you don't have enough time between the 7th and the 12th to do the ad. So right now, only meetings on the calendar, you would have to take action Monday night to authorize those advertisements unless you have a special meeting.
But the advertisement doesn't bind us, understand?
I understand.
I, I get it. What I, my point is, I do not want to advertise to the public a budget that has a tax increase in until we sit down and try to hammer it out. I get that we're not locking ourselves in, but I'm just coming from the standpoint of I, that's not the budget that I want to present to the public right now. I mean, that's where I'm at.
It's going to show on the website as you requested.
Right, but all they're going to see is what the numbers we presented here, that's, that's not, that's not what we're agreeing that we want to, you know, say that this is what we're going to do.
No, it's not. It's, this is a working, dynamic instrument. And if we publish it on the website, it's public.
Right, but to Dennis's point, he doesn't want to go out there and say, hey, we're going to, we're going to start at a three, we're going to, you know, we're going to start from our 3.4% increase. We'd rather hammer it out and say, well, maybe, maybe let's start at our 1% increase.
My whole point is to post there on the website, there's more information than just the budget. I think it's important to the public to see how many properties are assessed at $85,000, how many possess it more than that. What, I mean, all the different figures and statistics that Janice put in there is really what I want them to see. I don't want them, this is what I know. I love you, Evan, but you're going to tweet it out, and I'm going to get 700 phone calls tomorrow because this is the budget, and you're raising my taxes, and that is not the case. And I think by advertising this and putting it in the paper, that's sealing the deal, and people are going to get bent out of shape when that is not what's decided. And I think Cheryl and I are on the same page. I'm not shooting darts at you tonight, as I do sometimes, but I, I mean, I think we need to sit down, whether we have to meet six times in December or six more times this month, to try to hammer this out before we advertise to the public, is what I'm getting at.
The numbers went out on Twitter, as we said. It's already public.
Well, in December, you know, if, if you still want to keep talking about it and not pass it on the 12th, if we had any meetings on the 15th and 16th and came to those conclusions, we'd still have 10 days before the end of the year. But you got all this holiday stuff that goes on, it's, you know.
So what I'm hearing is the majority of council wants to, wants to just go forward and...
I don't know. It's only me, you, and Dan so far that have said anything, so anybody would like to...
All I'm asking for is that we get it, for timing purposes, that we get it published.
We can always have the special meeting. That's all I'm asking for.
I mean, are you okay with meeting in December? And in, I mean, we've done it before in the last week.
We'll meet whenever we need to.
The last week before the 31st, we've done it.
Think it'd be productive?
How do you feel? Mr. Prossol?
If you think we get a productive outcome, sure.
Publish?
This evening?
To wait.
All right. Well, we'll list this for action from Monday evening.
So you're going to publish it, or you're not going to publish it?
We'll make that decision Monday.
Okay.
Thank your staff. Number 12 is a resolution, Pico Green Region for Riverfront Park Trail Pavilion.
I can speak to that a little bit. This is a grant to the Pico Green Region for a new pavilion at Riverfront Park that would be adjacent to the parking area down there and the School River Trail, which is, you know, as you know, fairly heavily used. The Parks and Recreation Director wrote the grant to Pico, and I reviewed it. The, he also was able to secure a cash donation from the School River Heritage Area, which should help to strengthen the application a lot, bringing in a third outside party. And the plan would be for if we get the grant, to construct that before the next summer season, and then open that up for public use. And when it's not in public use, we could also rent it out. It's expected that that would generate anywhere from $7,000, somewhere in that range per year, in rental fees based on its prime location adjacent to the trail and a heavily, heavily used park. So it would more than pay for the borough's contribution towards the match for that grant.
Okay. Any questions or issues? All right, we'll list that for Monday. 13, amended property maintenance internal plumbing code. Mr. Place.
Basically, there's going to be some changes to the property.
Microphone.
Basically, there's some changes that needed to be done to the property maintenance code, plumbing code. Three of the primary changes were, there was concerns over licensing for master plumbers, master electricians, where we just eliminated it down to being a, previously tested with Borough Potstown or strictly through the ICC. So now we're going to reciprocate with other governing bodies where they tested before, whether it be Philadelphia, Harrisburg, make it easier for plumbers and electricians to be able to work here within the Borough Potstown.
Okay.
One of the other primary changes was a definition for an access door, which is in, within fire code. That was one of the other changes. And then the third real primary change is reaffirming what used to be in place before. When a property goes through a property transfer that were, they're within the realm of public water and they're on a well, then they would now have to be reconnected back to the public water system.
Okay. And are these similar to other borough ordinances? The reciprocity of licensing and that?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. We'll list it.
Well, I have just one, one comment. So when I was reviewing this in, in our packet, so normally, when I get the ordinance to review, it has the full text, whereas this one was kind of choppy. So it might have said Section A, and what the change was in red, but I didn't know what it had read before. So I'm going to be honest, I need more time to, to review it. I mean, I can't vote on it until I have time to look at what the ordinance said and what the proposed change is.
Great.
Can you, can you send that out?
I mean, if I, I mean, I could do it this weekend, but I...
Yeah, just to give more detail. And then, and then Keith, we were, as far as I know, we were the only borough or municipality that had a special test that state licensed contractors had to take to do work here.
We had previous testing through the Borough Potstown, which is no longer done, for master electricians, journeymen, master plumbers and journeymen. So one of the requirements, and the requirement is actually even within Philadelphia now. Philadelphia does testing through the International Code Council, and that is the testing that we accept. But what we decided to do to make it easier for master plumbers, master electricians who are outside the area that will come in and be able to do work here also, is to reciprocate if they've tested in a municipality, a city, or a borough where they have a testing procedure that is acceptable or similar to the ICC, that now we will accept that as long as they have proof that they took and passed that exam.
Okay. Very good. And we'll list that. 14 is bid awards for chemicals, and they were just opened today?
Information will be in your packets for the Monday night meeting.
Very good. We'll get that on Monday. Bid awards, traffic, street signs, and posts. We have that information.
Yes, you do.
Any discussion on that? We'll list that for Monday. That was A. B is water pipes and fittings.
You have it.
We have that. We'll list it. Highway materials.
Same.
Property maintenance.
Same.
Lawn and right-of-way maintenance.
Can I just ask a quick question on the lawn and right-of-way?
Sure.
I, I, for some reason, remember seeing that a couple of months ago, I thought.
Nope.
Was that for mowing?
These contracts are, trying to get out at the end of the year for the following year, so they were, they come up last, last fall, but they haven't been changed since.
Okay, all right. I'll do all of those Monday evening. Vacant positions, construction code, Board of Appeals. We have two vacant terms and an alternate document. These are the people who've applied?
Yes, you have two applicants.
Is, is this Ray Lopez our, our former borough manager?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, take action on that Monday evening. Harb, one vacancy. Any applicants? No? Human Relations Commission, our four vacancies, and we have documents from Jonathan Horson. Okay, move on that Monday. And we're at comments.
Jim Freimware.
I know it's been a long meeting. I want to thank you for giving me a minute to speak here.
You have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. But I first want to thank Evan Brand for the nice story that he put in the paper. It's not about, like I told you before, who does the job. It's how the job gets done, and we can help. And I also want to take a special thank you to Chief Drumheller. I had a conversation with him on a situation, and they were taking care of it, and I want to thank you very much, Chief Drumheller. Listen, I stand before you with 37 days to go on my project. We're giving out food baskets. The families are now, I mean, I'm ringing the bell this year. It's 81 families. About 375 to 425 children. I have angel trees out. If you see an angel tree, you want to grab an angel, please do so. But 81 families, if you take that at times, $150 a food basket is what they're worth. You know, plus paying for all the entertainment at the party. And I just want to share with you, two young ladies came into my store, not my store, but the guy that owns it, and said, Mr. Freimware, where's your tree? It was here last year. And they said, we're coming back, and we're taking six angels because I told my parents that we don't want those three presents each, we want to give them to somebody that needs. The need is there, folks. If it wouldn't be for Dana Corporation, the Comfort Inn, Ice House Deli, places like that, Catagin's Field Home, and, you know, helping try to make this project go, I need help. I'm one-third of the way there to meet my goal. I don't know where I'm going to go, but we have a fundraiser Sunday, Paint With A Twist in Roersford, and the lady said all the proceeds will go to us. But if you know anybody, a corporate donation like Sly Fox, I've been trying to get through to them and haven't got it. I need a corporate donation. The UAW in this town, I'm very proud of. Dana Corporation, US Axle, but US Axle's down this year, and I don't know where we're going to go with there, but the union always steps in and jumps in, and the Comfort Inn is a big contributor. But I'm just asking the borough, and I stand here with a humbled heart, because remember at Christmas time, when you're, you're table with your family and... at Christmas time, when you're at your table with your family, and, you know, charity starts at home, but if there's any way you can help, and like I told you before, I'm not trying to compete with the Mercury's Operation Holiday, but I have a big horse here, I was able to bring it back into the borough, I'm asking each and every one of you, Councilman Torone always got me some sponsors, backed my project, I'm just reaching out with a humbled heart because we need to make this work. Thank you, and God bless our children, and God bless all our veterans on Friday, you gave up for us.
Very good, thank you.
Deb Penrod.
This is a 15-second informal update on the library on behalf of the Board of Directors. Instead of the 10-minute dissertation I was planning to give as a preview, or a sneak preview of Art Green's report on Monday, I just wanted to give you some timely notice. The renovation project is moving along really well, we have an L and I inspection scheduled for later this month, and pending favorable outcome of that, you all will be receiving invitations to the Chamber of Commerce ribbon counting ceremony on Thursday, December 1st, in the morning, if you can make it. And then also you and the public will be invited to our first grand opening, or soft opening, on Saturday, December 3rd, from 10 to 2:00. And if anyone has any questions, or if you'd like to get a sneak peek, contact me, or Art, or Sue Davis at the library.
Thank you.
That's the extended session.
All right. Okay, how about councilor's general discussion? Mr. Paez? Any comment? Mr. Arms?
Just one quick one, I attended the same training with Mayor Thomas on Monday, and I highly recommend, for the NARCAN training, highly recommend, if you're available, I'm hoping that he'll come back to the borough to offer the training again, it was well worth it, got a really good education out of the training.
Okay. Mr. Profskell?
I'd like to thank anybody, everybody that came out to vote yesterday, I was poll watching, and I was told about one of the, the longer poll watchers, that's the largest turnout that he's seen since Kennedy.
Good. Ms. Culp?
Um, nothing right now.
Ms. Miller?
I just have a couple. One, I'd like to see, I'd like to see more accountability and transparency for nonprofits and organizations that are fundraising in the borough. I understand that legally there are, all these organizations are only accountable to the IRS, but I believe if you are somebody that's true to your mission, that there would be no reason that you can't have a simple revenue and expense, as basic as balancing a checkbook, available on a website, or a Facebook page, that the general public can see. I want to thank Mayor Thomas for the beautiful heartfelt service she delivered at my mom's funeral, I can't thank you enough, the family is very grateful. And the next borough buzz is going to be on Community Connection, so they'd be looking for that towards the end of the month. We will be filming everybody that we're, that we're going to be interviewing, it's going to be right here in downtown Pottstown, so we'll make it easy for, for Gus, and look for that at the end of the month.
Very good. Mayor Thomas? Okay. I will conclude, I, too, was out in the street on Tuesday, and my best guess is that we had about a 70 percent voter turnout here in Pottstown. That's phenomenal, and you all should be commended. Normally, we're running the 20 or 15 percent range, but for 70 percent of the registered voters to come out, that is great, and I hope that's just the beginning of a trend here in town. We do have an executive session?
Yes, to discuss collective bargaining, and we don't anticipate any actions to follow.
Very good. We will not be returning for any more business, so meeting adjourned.